Six o'clock, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Casiano, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of court.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Cesar Nevadas.
Here.
Ralph Turan.
Here.
Mayor Elia Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a court.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. David Estrada. Mr. Estrada, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is David Estrada. I'm here to talk to you about, I believe it's item number sixteen. The Buena Vista Bonita subdivision, I believe. I'm here because I'm under the understanding that you'll be voting on the final plat for today. The paperwork that Conde Engineering was supposed to turn in and the agreement between the city of Socorro and Conde Engineering, I think that's been turned in. I'm hoping that all of you have had a chance to review it. We've reviewed it and as far as the people living in the Rancho Miraval subdivision, in general, we're, we still feel that we're a little bit, coming up a little bit short. There's stuff in here that we had agreed on, or at least we felt that we were in agreement. In order for this subdivision to be approved, we felt that Rancho, Rancho Miraval, the streets in there would be vacated. And the way this is written, there's nothing in there that's stating anything about vacating those streets. The developer gets the easement, right? And the easement, the property that now belongs to people living in Rancho Miraval, they're gonna give up a part of their backyards. The developer gets his access. But then Antigua Streets and Tres Caballos are still wide open for any, anything in the future that might, that might happen. There's nothing in there as far as what we agreed on these streets being vacated. A few weeks ago, you all had provided for us a list of requirements that were needed to meet the vacating and you were asking the residents of Rancho Miraval to meet those requirements. And those requirements are very difficult to achieve. So, we feel that the developer gets what he wants and he goes on to develop a subdivision that's subpar. And I want to talk more about that, under item number sixteen. So, I'm hoping that you've reviewed it. I'm hoping that you postpone the vote and review it further and give your constituents what you all talked about. And that's vacating the streets in Tres Caballos. That was a major, major issue. And the agreement was that we would give up the easement in return, vacate, vacate the streets. And that's not happening. They're taking the easement, streets aren't vacating. He goes on to develop a subpar subdivision. The constituents are just not happy. Usually, we have a room full of constituents. They're not here. Ferny asked me to come in and speak on his behalf on some of these points. But you know how, what he would be saying, everybody, everybody up their nose, Ferny. So, please, please consider and postpone this vote until you review it further and you give the constituents what they're, what they're asking for. Thank you.
Irma Flores? Ms. Flores, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. Rene Rodriguez walked into the meeting at six oh four.
Good afternoon. My name is Irma Flores. I'm the Communications and Community Relations Officer for the North American Development Bank. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to extend an invitation to the city of Socorro. We will be hosting a meeting with Congressman Hurd at the North American Development Bank offices in San Antonio on May thirty first. The congressman wants to help advance infrastructure needs specifically to address any flooding and roadway issues here in Socorro and believes that the bank is an option to provide those funding. For those who may not be familiar with the bank, we provide financing as well as technical and other assistance to support the development and implementation of infrastructure projects that help preserve, protect, and enhance the environment of the border region. And if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We can't ask questions, right? Because it's only public comment?
Actually, a question is not, maybe I probably could ask a question?
Well, I wanna, wanna ask you. It's, it's May thirty first, that's Thursday. We don't have any more meetings till June. So, we would need a special meeting in order for us to say who wants to go. Because I know I want to go. Because that's something that the city needs is because we're using either COs or we're using our general fund for those types. And this is another form of going out and trying to get funding.
If you want the city to approve the draft, yes, we can, yes. Just want to know.
Okay, is it too far fetched to, can we add just that item for Saturday? Or is it already too late? Okay, so then we would have to... Okay. If we wanted a special donation, we could still put it up for Monday, right? Just for that?
Meeting.
A meeting?
Special meeting?
Yes. Okay, if anybody wants to go, we should do a special meeting, please. I know I want to go. This is, this is something for us not to use our...
Okay, now you're the one.
Okay, no, 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 for Monday.
Okay.
Mayor, we have to call a special meeting.
Or three of us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jesús Cabrera? Mr. Cabrera, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My point is, I've been reading this letter that's supposed to the lawyer from the developer concerning, you know, Rancho Miraval, that's where I live and right on the front of the street of Tres Caballos. All the issues, it has a lot of discrepancies. And one of the issues is the enclosure of the streets and concerning the easement. On my original, when I bought the property, it's supposed to be a forty-five feet. Now they pushing fifty-five feet. And according what I see on this drawing, it's taking the easement for all those properties, but not from the farm property, where it's on the pecan street. I don't know why they don't show up, that they're gonna have to take also forty-five feet from, from that property so they can make the ninety, the ninety feet road. Besides, they don't mention anything concerning the wall that they promised. So, I wanted to oppose, you know, the vote for this time so they can, you, or you don't have the time to review this document. It's a lot of discrepancy. I don't see, no, what they say, when they promised the wall about what, two or three minutes ago, that they say in person to Mr. Rene Rodriguez, to Mr. Perez, that they're gonna put him on writing and it's not. So, I just want you to, to review it and oppose it. Because in reality, next month, it's gonna be three years coming, every meeting concerning all these items. So, I just wanna make sure that, give it a chance. Because in reality, they, they wanna do what they wanna do. It's kind of a not taking that, your decision. The developer wants to do whatever he wants to do. But on the drawing, it's a lot of discrepancy. You can see it right here. They're not taking any, any part of the easement from the ranch. They're taking almost a fifty-five feet, which I don't know where they're coming from. But I have right here, that drawing, when I bought the property, it says forty-five feet easement for all those properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Alos?
Mr. Martinez, I have a question. I, I know I'm supposed to stay away from these, this type of a situation because I am a resident of that, of Rancho Miraval. But is there anything I can do that will not violate my position as a councilwoman? For example, I would like to request that, you know, we have had these items come up and over and over and over for the last many years and we're still going through the same motions. And our constituents, or the constituents at Rancho Miraval, have no faith in me because I cannot touch or talk or, you know, express my feelings because I am a resident there.
You're talking about item sixteen?
Yes, sir.
I think that would be more appropriate to bring up on the council residence.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Item number five, proclamation. The Lopez Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is celebrating Lopez Awareness Month in May and Lopez Awareness Day on Friday, May eighteenth. Put on Purple Day is an annual event that asks the community to put on purple to support the cause. Whereas, an estimated 1.5 million Americans suffer from lupus, the chronic inflammatory autoimmune disease that can affect various parts of the body, especially the skin, joints, blood, and kidneys. And whereas lupus can be difficult to diagnose because its symptoms, symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences. And whereas, the Lopez Foundation of America Lone Star Chapter is part of a national force devoted to solving the cruel mystery of lupus while providing caring support to those who suffer from its brutal impact. And whereas, the chapter rallied the name of the city of Socorro community to wear the color purple and to further unify the support for those living with the disease. And whereas, awareness is vital in raising funds for research for those affected by lupus and it is a responsibility as a community to advocate on their behalf and to further encourage educational programs so everyone affected by lupus can have an improved quality of life. Now, therefore, I, Elia Garcia, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Socorro, Texas, do hereby proclaim May eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Put on Purple Day throughout the city of Socorro and urge all citizens to support the cause of raising awareness of lupus so that we can have a world with no lupus.
Item number six, presentation by city manager regarding April two thousand and eighteen monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I have our April highlights for the departments. Our municipal courts department collected one, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the month of April. From April second through May, April sixth, there was a warrant roundup. The total collected there was thirty-two thousand. They received four hundred and seventy-five citations from the Socorro Police Department, forty-one citations from the Department of Public Safety, thirty-one ordinance violation citations. Our HR department celebrated birthdays and anniversaries for March and April. On the twentieth, employees of the month was Yunes, Márquez, and Joe Terrazas. Civil service meeting on April twenty-third, they reviewed changes to ordinance one eighty-six. There was three separations, our planning and zoning director, one laborer, and one dispatcher. Our parks and public works department installed radar sign on Cielo Azul, started earthwork for the Veterans Park walking trail, started phase six of the systematic approach, working on Bulldog Splash Park to open for Memorial Day weekend, sandbag preparation for monsoon season, potholes repairs for Delano, Huereque, Valle Florido, Carablanca, Angus Street, and continue to maintain the mowing and grooming of all city parks. The police department received two thousand four hundred and seventy-seven calls of service. The chief of police position brochure was posted on April first. We have received about ten qualified candidates as of today. The police department continues mandatory training for our officers to keep them in compliance with certification of TICLO requirements. Our city clerk conducted and prepared minutes for two council meetings, April fifth and the nineteenth, received eighteen open records, records requests, and responded to fifteen. Prepared the publication for the onion field excavation bid and prepared the agenda for our civil service meeting. Our planning and zoning department collected thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, issued a hundred and ninety-seven permits, eighty-one registrations, ten applications, and twenty letters. Our recreations department had senior movie day on April the twelfth and the twenty-sixth, senior citizens fall prevention class on April twentieth and twenty-seventh, attended fifty-three-ten grant meeting on April the nineteenth, also attended the Lucy G. Acosta humanitarian award, celebrated Dia de los Niños on April the twenty-eighth. Total Rio Vista visitor participants were two thousand four hundred and seven. For Chayo Apodaca, we had three hundred and sixty-five visitors. Our IT department is creating plans for flood awareness web page, working with Presidio to implement the Fusion voice data services and developing, developing a plan to deploy new ethernet ports for Wi-Fi hotspots and troubleshoot it all IT-related issues. Our grants department approval of EDHOT, received approval of EDHOT committee recommendation from the NPO to fully fund the grant proposal of an ADA compliant vehicle in the amount of eighty-four thousand. TPB board will vote on this item tomorrow. A total of ten grant applications have been submitted since January two thousand and eighteen. Right now, we have secured one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars since January two thousand and eighteen. Do you all have any questions?
Ms. Alos?
On, this is because I'm, I'm going blind. And so, our, our reports are like really tiny and even with my glasses, I cannot see. And we have plenty of page. Is there any way you guys can enlarge them a little bit more? I'm having to use a, what do you, what do you call that? Magnifying glass and it, you know, it takes me forever to have to, because I have to kind of... Or maybe we can color code it or something like that, if you don't mind?
Okay, I can actually email it. And when you open it, you can zoom as, as much as you want in order for you to be able to read it.
Yeah, that's kind of like...
Because if we don't do fit one page, it normally takes like two, three pages just because of the size of paper.
Well, I'm just saying, for example... Mr. Iker, there's plenty of room. I'm not asking for more pages. There's plenty of room and it's so tiny.
Correct, but because of the way it's formatted, what I can do is put two slides to a paper, if you prefer, instead of four.
Well, no, that defeats the purpose. The other thing I wanted to ask, in last year, in April, the collection of all the departments was three times larger than it was this month. Do you happen to know why?
For which department specifically?
Well, if you look at the reports, in every department, there was maybe collected, they collected thirty-one thousand. Last year was sixty thousand.
Correct, and that could just be the business registrations. Last year, last month, we had a really huge spike in the planning and zoning department and that's because the business registrations came in. Last year, I do remember that the letters were sent out a little bit later. So, that could be a factor.
So, they just kind of tiled up and were paid in April.
Correct.
Okay. And I think that is true. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Are we done? Could, could I move item sixteen, seventeen?
So, you all have no question?
No, thank you. Very informative. Sixteen, seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one.
In, in that order?
In that order, sixteen, seventeen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action on the final plat approval for Vista Bonita Estates subdivision unit one being a portion of tract five, block twenty-four, San Elizario grants.
Mayor and council, the reason that this item continues, you know, you continue to see it is because Mr. Perez had requested for us to continue adding it to the agenda so we wouldn't, we wouldn't put it in the back burner. We did receive the, the agreement at our last meeting and right now it's still under review with our attorneys. We're still working out and we are gonna meet with the constituents, the attorney, and the developer to come into an agreement before we move forward. But the only reason that it's, it's showing up every meeting is because Mr. Perez had requested us to do that.
Mr. Rodriguez?
And I agree, I remember that as well. There are some discrepancies that I also want to be, so I would like to be notified when they're going to be meeting so I could attend that meeting as well. I've done it at the beginning and I want to see it through.
And I did send the agreement to both Ms. Colombia Lobos and yourself, sir.
Okay.
With Mr. Salcedo and Mr. Estrada. The agreements were sent.
So, at this time, we just postponed it to the next meeting?
Yes, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to postpone number item sixteen until everything for next meeting.
Second.
Can I, just real quick?
Ms. Alos?
Mr. Martinez, I'd like to sit down to talk to you or call you about how, as a constituent, with all my rights, still participate in, in something like, in something that, where I live.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy, excuse me, I'm happy to. The general rule is, I think you've done the right thing by recusing yourself. I think that's prudent as a council member. If you are sitting out here in the audience and simply wish to voice your opinion or request action as a citizen, I think you can do that, but that's the distinction.
Thank you.
David Estrada?
My name's David Estrada. Thank you for recognizing that there are discrepancies and thank you for, for postponing. We do appreciate that. In addition, I want to say, oh, yeah, we've been here a long time and you may have driven out to subdivisions that, that are, that are gonna look like this subdivision that's being proposed. But I'm gonna ask you to revisit them, you know? Pecan Grove and then there's another subdivision down off of Chicken Ranch Road close to Socorro Road, between Socorro Road and Alameda, on Chicken Ranch Road, there's another subdivision. This, what, the subdivision that adjacent to Rancho Miraval, we all know it's, it's in county land. There, there is no jurisdiction. City of Socorro, city of, city of San Elizario, they have no jurisdiction on there. So, at a future date, it's in the ETJ, there's, and I've said this before, you may recall, there's gonna be a city council sitting where you're at twenty years from now wondering why in the world a city council would, would not find a way to stop a subdivision from being developed in this way. It's right on the border. It doesn't have to be in my backyard or in my neighbor's backyard or in the backyard of the city of Socorro. It's adjacent. I mean, you can literally straddle the line. So, I'll ask you to...
Mr. Estrada, your time is up.
Drive the subdivisions, if you will. Thank you.
Jesús Cabrera?
The only thing I'm asking is, you know, to review again the proposal to ensure, you know, I know it's hard for, for everybody, for, especially for Socorro, to try to comply also with this community, Rancho Miraval. But at the long run, like Mr. Estrada says, you don't realize that we're building another parks over there. And our properties, for sure, they're gonna go down on price, on taxes and everything. So, I just want to make sure. And I don't know if one of you is reading this, I'm just giving you, then I'm not lying. This is the map where actually it says forty-five minute, forty-five, forty-five feet easement. Not fifty, not fifty-five. Because in reality, on my property, forty-five feet, I'm losing over an acre. Five more feet, I'm losing more than three quarters of the acre. So, I really appreciate that you can really look into this and help us. That's only what I'm asking, help us, please. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action to award Delmar Contracting, Inc. for excavation of around a third of the onion field in the amount of nine hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars for only the excavation or one million, seven hundred, forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-one with the covert unauthorized city manager or her designee to sign contract or reject bid and go out for bid again.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I would make a motion to, to deny the, the bid to Delmar Contracting, Inc. for the, oh, that I'm, that I'm denying the bid for Delmar Contracting, Inc. because we're going into budget starting Saturday. You know, there's two different numbers, if you can see, without, I want to, can I have a second and then I'm gonna tell you? Or to just...
Second motion.
Can you just make your motion, please?
Yeah, I made a motion to deny the bid. Okay. Now, mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay. The reason why is because we're going into budget Saturday. There's, we do have funding for the nine hundred, forty-four thousand plus, but we don't have for the one point seven million dollars. So, you heard right now that, that Congressman Hurd invited us to go for the NetBank because those are, they're very low interest loans that are provided to the, any municipality so that we can go out and try to do the whole one point seven or when we go out for, for rebids again, we can go out for those bigger sums so that we can do both. Because there's no sense in doing just the bottom portion and then opening up the barrier, something that we already paid for, so that the water can go in there, fill it up with sand again. And that's the problem. It's gonna be filled with sand again once you open that barrier. And even if it's open, you're gonna fill the sand that we excavated out. So, there is no reason why we should do this project if we're not gonna do both ends, the covert with the onion field. But we don't have that money and therefore that's why I'm calling for the denial of this bid so that we can better project ourselves because we're gonna do budget hearings on Saturday and also if it's a possibility that we can have a meeting and, and, and go with Mr. Hurd and, and talk to the, the people from NetBank because that's very, it's gonna be very crucial. Because if we have, we have, we have physical money, nine hundred thousand plus, to do it. But wouldn't it be prudent to really do our work and do our homework and say, hey, we can get this loan, a very low interest rate loan, and we can still have money to do other projects? Because if we do this, we won't have money to do other projects. So, that's why I'm saying... So that's why I'm saying, no, let's post, let's deny it, let's go out and, 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 and look at our other options, we're gonna be budgeting for next year, and also, there might be a possibility that we might go, like I said, with Mr. Hurd, um, and, and we can look at our other options as well, and that's why.
Mr. Perez?
Is there any, uh, in, are there any ramifications with us not going, or, or, um, uh...
A warning?
Not a warning, just, thank you, a warning, uh, bid?
Yeah, we have the right to reject all bids.
Thank you.
Is there a recommendation from staff?
I mean, we would, we would, um, like to start the excavation as soon as possible, since monsoon is about to start, however, I do understand what Mr. Rodriguez is trying to say, is that it would be better we had the culverts, and not just the excavation.
Mr. Perez?
No, and, um, and then I think it's a better way of leveraging, uh, our funds, with something that, that Representative Hurd is willing to, but, but that's not a guarantee either, though, at this point.
Can I answer this question?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I've, I've been in contact with Mr. Hurd, um, and that was one of the things that we wanted to address. He got back to me, he says, look, he gave me infr, uh, he gave me contacts, uh, to call, I've been doing that, but one of the things is about money, that's the issue, is that it costs so much, people don't understand that nine hundred thousand dollars is almost ten percent of our budget, okay? Ten percent of a budget is a lot, and that's not even touching the subject. So, it's, for me, you know, it's, it's, uh, and, and talking with Mr. Hurd, he said, look, I'll help you, we'll go knock on doors, you know, now he called, um, and he told me, hey, we're, we're gonna do this, we're gonna send you an email, which I showed Mr. Nevadas right now, um, I think all of us received it, so, you know, he's, he's helping us, and, and it's good that our congressman is, is backing us up and trying to open these doors, so that we can get, you know, hopefully a better rate, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Yellos?
And again, I hate to be such a pain, but I can't see this, and I don't know if you guys can see this.
No.
I can't see it at all, I can't see this either, it's just a waste of paper, and I can't see it or read it. I know that we could read it on the computer, but when we're here, we don't have a computer, and if we wanna, you know, reference something, we can't see it, so I just ask respectfully again, if it could be enlarged just a little bit, so we can see it.
We can enlarge it, but it would have to be in legal-sized paper.
No, no, there's plenty of room, don't you think?
Yes ma'am, but the formatting, the formatting of it is a little complicated, once you, you change a little bit of the margins, it's gonna, it's...
How about, no, you can do it, you tried that too?
But I mean, we can definitely give you legal-sized paper.
Well, yeah, one pa, or one paper, and... 'Cause see, this one's perfect, you can really see it. I, I'm just saying, I, I'm sorry, but I just can't read it.
Sister Nevadas?
Aye.
Sister Nevadas?
Yes.
Ralph Duran? Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to reconsider prior action directing staff to amend chapter six, building and construction, article four, substandard buildings of the code of ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to require city council to have final action on all substandard building cases, and have the building and standards commission provide a recommendation as requested by the buildings and standards commission.
Mr. Duran?
Um, the reason I brought this back, I think, do I need to make a motion first?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to, um, recons, well, no, what would my motion be? To have, to separate the planning and zoning commission from the, uh, I need my glasses too, to the building and standard commission, and have them... Thank you. Like to direct staff to amend chapter six, building and construction, article four, substandard buildings of the code of ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to require city council to have final action on all substandard building cases, and to have the building and standards commission provide a recommendation as requested by the standards commission. I would like to change that, or deny it, to where the building and standards commission would have the final say, reason being, okay?
We need to make, you need a second first, to discuss it.
I'll just, in for discussion.
Thank you. Reason being, when we, um, when we went to Terrell, Texas, the one thing I learned is that we are the city council that make policy. We need to have the standards, the building and standards commission do the policy. I think that once, and we've seen it here already, where people come in here, they're screaming and hollering about what we're doing, and we cave in.
Pleasure.
I think we need to do is have these, have a separate, to where they make the decisions, we give them the training that they need, 'cause none of us are trained either, we give them very good training, so that they can make the decision on whether, uh, a building was to be condemned or not, I don't think that, going back and thinking about it, I realized that it would become political, and we would not make the right decision. Whereas if we have a building and standards commission that are well-trained, and know the law, and they can administer that law, that way we can, you know, we can just make the policy, and have them enforce the policy. I think that would be, um, a lot better than us making that final decision, because it would, it would become political, I guarantee it, and then we would not make the, I don't think we would make the proper decision.
Mr. Perez?
The only thing that I see with that, though, is that we have currently the, um, planning and zoning commission, and they offer up, uh, recommendations, and we have very rarely didn't, uh, gone against what they recommended, and I think that, that at this point, and I remember that discussion, I don't know if it was two minutes ago, or whenever it was, that we said that, um, that building and standards, building and standards commission was, well, that we needed to separate it from, from the planning and zoning, but beyond that, it was because the, the decision that they had to make wa, were, could be very hard on the commissioner members, because they were appointed, whereas we were elected. And so I think that, I know, that if we were to have the, the, uh, building, I, I'm sorry, I, the, the official title escapes me.
Building and standards commission.
Building and standards commission, thank you. Um, remains as an advisory, uh, remains advisory in nature, I think that I, I as a council member could still make a, a decision for the benefit of the city, unfortunately, neither of us is gonna agree with it, but by the same token, that's what I, again, only me, that's what I'm here for.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, um, people tend to forget that the reason also that Mr. Perez decided to, and I'll also stretch that out, is that our building and standards commission is under our planning and zoning, they have two hats on. What people tend to forget is that the reason why we moved to this was because we're gonna change it, we're gonna take action on it, till we fix the problem. The problem lies, is that our commissioners, right now, don't have a problem with, uh, the, the, uh, oh my god, with the, with, with that process, but they do have a process that when they barely found out that they had to, that they are commissioners for the, for the, uh, for the building and standards, and they had to evict these people, they all called me and said, hey man, I didn't sign up for this, none of them did, they were all upset that they had to make that recommendation. They said, you know what, we were never told, we were told that we were for planning and zoning, nobody sat them down and said, hey, you're also gonna be included, and you're gonna be able to evict people too, that is what they didn't understand. So, what we did, and we took it upon ourselves, when we unanimously voted, okay, I want you to understand this, we unanimously, unanimously voted for it, so that we can have the last saying. We also said that we are gonna fix our ordinances, we're gonna separate them, and until that time, we're gonna hold the candle. I think that, you know, I don't understand why we're bringing this up, just because we had a change of heart, because it's gonna be, you know, our, our saying, and it's gonna be political, you know, I can give you countless and countless of agenda items that are political. And I speak for myself, okay? What, any decision that I've made, I will die on the sword for it. If I didn't like something, and I fought you, believe me, I fought you in the last three months, on four agenda items, and I said no, and no, I didn't vote you, at the end, yes, so that I can bring it back and have another discussion, when it was unanimously voted on. I think that this is a waste of time, because we unanimously voted for this, this is a waste of our time, and our citizens' time. I don't think we should bring something up like this, just because we had a change of heart, or because it's political. That's all I have to say.
Well, it's not a waste of time. Discussing what happens to the people of Socorro is never a waste of time, I'm sorry to, um, disagree with you there. We need to separate, and we're gonna separate them, we're gonna separate the two, we will have a separate commission, and they will be trained, maybe the same people that are on there now are not gonna be the ones, and I don't think they should be, because they did not sign up for that. We need to find dedicated people who do sign up for it, give them the proper training, the policy has been set, we've already set the policy, we have the policy. Civil Service Commission has final say. Board of Adjustments has final say. These are people, I've served on civil service, I've done the hard decisions, I've lost friends, because I had to do what was right. The same thing can be of this commission, once we get the right people in, why are we, why are we trying to, uh, micromanage, is what it is? Did we learn nothing in Terrell, Texas? What did they tell us? What did they tell us? We're here to set policy, number one, staff is there to implement that policy, and if we put the right people in, granted, yeah, they all called, they called him, everybody called him, and told him, no, we didn't sign up for this. I agree with that, they didn't, they signed up to be advisory, but if we put the right people in, train them, give them the training they need, I think that's a, most of our boards and commissions, until recently, didn't even know that they had to take open meetings training, I brought that up. Even this city council before did not know they needed to have open training, open meetings training. So we need to make sure that our, our boards and commissions, the people on there are trained properly, to implement the policy that we, as a commission, as a, as a, uh, council, set. The policy's already set, we have the policies already in place, I think we need to step back and let the people who we hire implement those policies, staff, that is their job, I don't think it's, I don't think it's our job to, um, second guess them, because that's who we, who we pay to do.
Mr. Perez?
Jim, for my own clarification, are there, um, commissions that are required by state statute?
Yes, there are some that are, yes, like, for instance, the city plan commission.
Okay, how about the civil service?
Which in our iteration of that is the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, and the civil service commission is not by state statute that you, that you can recall?
Stretching my memory there, no, I don't think it is.
Okay.
Some of them are addressed by charter too, if they're not addressed by state law, building and standards commission is neither.
Because I, I just wanted to see, or make the point, and I, and maybe I'm talking out of turn, but my understanding was that if the, um, if someone was not happy with a civil service commission rendering, in, in terms of a decision, that they could appeal it to, to city council?
I, generally, that's true, there are some things that aren't to people.
But that there are some things that, that can...
Yes, many are.
So ultimately, there is a potential for city council to hear, uh, civil service grievances before this, this body.
For that, yes, for like, for, yes, but for planning and zoning, that's much more restricted, and, and, and actually, Socorro, you have some options under state laws, Socorro has chosen to permit more appeals than, than are required under the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
Um, you could assign a lot of it for final decision to PCC if you, if you chose to, or to the city plan commission, as the state statute refers to it, um, the pa, building and standards is the same way, it depends on how you structure it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mayor, just to...
Mr. Rodriguez?
I just wanna, uh, just, uh, give a comment to, uh, Mr. Perez, yes, we did, and you just barely got elected, when we had just precisely what you asked, and it was one of our, uh, grievances that we heard from one of our parks department, that was brought up to us, after the civil service did their finding, just FYI.
Benelovis?
Nay.
Sister Nevadas?
Nay.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
No.
Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Gentlemen, you all both have a very valid point, um, it's, I'm, it's, I'm torn between both of you, I love the idea of educating, and, and getting them ready, and I think we'll get there, but it's not right now, 'cause they're not ready.
No. Item twenty-one, discussion and action to reconsider prior action directing staff to have the city's engineering firm to provide a quote on creating a roundabout on stockyard to minimize bidding.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I make a motion to deny...
I'm sorry.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
The reason, it goes back to the same thing, it's, it's a mute point, you know, we unanimously agreed, all we're doing is we're sending staff to let us know and give us a recommendation, whether it could be done or not, if we have available funds, it's not that we're gonna go and make it. So I don't understand why we're bringing this, this back, just for reconsideration, so that we can't even, even think about giving this to our constituency? I don't think so, I think this is wrong. Once again, we unanimously voted to approve this, and once again, just because somebody doesn't like it, wants to have a further discussion on it, and because it's a good plan, but it's not his plan, we're here discussing it, and that's how I really truly feel. So, once again, we're going to, we already approved this, that's why I'm denying it, because we're not gonna build it, we're gonna try to find out if it's feasible, how much it's gonna cost, that's it.
Mr. Duran?
Well, we, um, we unanimously have voted for it without knowing the costs, just the engineering cost alone is fifty-one hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents, just to engineer it. The building cost, a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and four dollars and forty cents, do we have that kind of money just to be, um, checking to see if we need it? Did we have any traffic studies done, to check and see if we need it, to spend five thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents? I don't think so. We're talking about going into budget, and we're, we're not even listening to the people we went to go visit, policy's in place, do we, is there a need for it? We decided unanimously that there was a need for it, without having the information we needed, now we have the information, some of it, not all of it. So are we going to be putting roundabouts all over the city of Socorro when, for a hundred and twenty thousand dollar per copy? I don't think so. This is why I brought it back, not because of some lame reason, I don't know, but I brought it back when I found out the, the cost of it, we're not gonna be building these, we don't have the, that kind of money, we don't have a fifty million dollar budget, ours is a lot less. Ours is a lot less. And to go out and spend fifty-one hundred dollars just to find out that we're not gonna build it, to me, is wasteful. It's a complete waste of money. We don't have the money to, to build these, we don't have the money to even engineer them. And to, it just, you know. I just think that we, we don't need to be looking at things that we can't afford.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Wow, just to hear wasteful. You know what's wasteful? Spending ten thousand dollars on a name change that we did not need. That's wasteful, coming from that individual. Don't talk to me about budget, because I know about budget. You don't even know how much our budget is a year. It's not a lot. What's the number? So, one of the things is, I will say, is this, Mayor. This is mute. I do not understand why we're doing this, because like I said one more time, I will say, we're not building them. We just wanna know if it's feasible. And therefore, that's why we unanimously agreed to let our administration go do the hard work for us. And then let us know what they find, if it's feasible, if we do have enough right of way, if, 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 and then we, we go into all of the specifics of engineering. But you, you're worried about five thousand dollars when you spend ten thousand dollars on a name change? I don't get it. I don't think, nobody has a right to say about wasteful spending when you spend ten thousand dollars on a name change.
Ms. Elavos?
I, um, gentlemen, it, it's not about the money right now, it's about safety. I believe the residents, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, was it two hundred signatures that they collected for this, for this area? I know we, I know we're tight, but we can't, we can't not protect the citizens. I'll tell you something, I didn't say it last time, but I'll say it now. I was campaigning in that area, and I did the stop. I know exactly what happened. I ended up wanting to go up the mountain straight, and this car just came right at me. I ended up turning and did a three sixty, because it's big enough, but I didn't get hit. And I had two people with me in the car that can verify that. I didn't say it last time, I'm saying it now. We're doing it for safety reasons. Now, the other thing is, where did you, I, I don't have that information, how did you obtain that information? I thought they were still researching it.
It's been researched.
Okay. So, it's fifty-one just for that area, or for the total?
That is just to engineer it. Pardon me, Mayor.
Mr. Duran?
That's, but it's for the whole area that we requested, or just one area?
Just that area.
Can we ask for other engineers to look at it for a lot less? That could be possible?
Okay, so, that information Mr. Duran received this morning, because the engineers just sent it. Because we were directed by council to go out and look for a quote that we were gonna present at our next meeting, to discuss.
Yeah, but this item was put on the agenda last week?
Yes, ma'am, without that documentation, because that documentation didn't exist at that time.
I, I just think safety should come first, long story.
Mr. Duran?
Mr. Perez, at the la, at one meeting, when we brought up about parts needing repair, he did mention, and it was a good point, all of our parks need repair. All of our city needs safety items. We're just talking about one area, a hundred thousand dollars for one street. My neighbor lives in front of me, his house has been hit three times. I call this house the piñata, because it gets hit so often, and we do have speed humps. And if we wanna talk about waste, talking about somebody that put in speed bumps all over the city that are illegal, they didn't even research it. So, now we had to go back, and I don't know how much we had to spend, that was waste, to bring them up to code and make sure that they were speed humps. So, don't, you know, let's leave the past in the past, let's move forward. And I just don't think we need to be spending this kind of money for something we're not gonna build. We don't have the money right now for the engineering. Mr. Drata, do we have money in the general fund allocated for engineering for roundabouts? No. So, we don't have, the money's not there?
There's money allocated under the seals for infrastructure.
Infrastructure. But if we spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on one street, only one street's gonna get taken care of. We have, we have all kinds of streets all over the city that need work. They need help. And we're gonna spend all this on one street. Safety, yes, I agree with you, hundred percent. We do need our streets to be safe. But there's a lot of streets that need work, not just one. And I think going, spending this kind of money on one street is cheating all of our other constituents. And I, I mean, I could bring all of the issues in my district, one by one up here, and they wouldn't, I mean, we don't have the money for them. We don't have the money for this. I think we need to go back, save this money that we're gonna basically spend and not have anything to show for it. 'Cause we're not gonna spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on a roundabout. So, I think we need to, um, just stop this right now, not spend the money, and go back and, and look at the entire city, not just one street. And see what we can do for our entire city on safety issues.
Mr. Navarres?
Let's call the question. I don't think we can risk safety for, and it's not a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, cannot be. So, let's call for the question.
Ms. Elavos?
And, and that's my question, could we find a, a firm, an engineer firm that would charge less to do the research?
The item that you all approved last time was to go to our engineer and receive a quote. So, I will bring that back next meeting, so we can go over the numbers, and then we'll have the engineer here to explain exactly what that amount is.
And, and if not at that, somebody can put on the agenda still, an item stating, you know, going out forbid for other engineers?
Correct.
Other, okay. That's, that's an idea, you guys, let's not stop it here.
And, okay.
Mr. Perez?
Very, very quickly, I think that we need to, and I don't mean to belabor the point, but I think we're talking about two different things. One is the, the engineering, and then the other one, the actual building, the construction of it. And I think that if, if we work it correctly, I think that we can start getting economies of scale when you start looking at multiple projects. And then, and then those sizes, the, the, the costs of the project start to diminish a little bit, not a lot. But the thing is that if we don't start doing something now, for example, if, if we develop a long-term plan for a roundabout or whatever's best for the city, I think that, that we need to look at those things. And, and yes, it, it will cost money, but the thing is that we can't, and, and you may or may not agree with this, but we can't put a price on the safety of our, our constituents. That's it.
Mr. Duran?
Mayor, 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 we said we were gonna follow Robert's rules, and he can only speak twice. This would be his third, and we already called for the question.
You're speaking third time right now?
We didn't vote on that question.
Because I'm, I'm letting the mayor know that we're obeying Robert's rules, and Robert's rule says twice.
Okay, let's call for, let's have a vote on the question.
Aye.
Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Cudahy?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
The, the question, this is to deny, yes.
No, this was, he called for the question, we have to have a vote on whether to stop discussion. That is Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
Yes, so now we do-
The motion is to stop discussion.
We did, so now it's the motion to-
We vote on the motion to stop discussion. Robert's Rules of Order does call for that. Jim, could you give us some?
Yeah, it does, but the mayor doesn't have to conduct that vote, the presiding officer of meetings, if you terminate discussion, or recognize that it's terminated, they call for a voting.
Okay, we call for the mayor.
Can we just go ahead and vote on the motion? And can you just clarify what the motion was for everybody?
The motion was to deny the reconsideration?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Navarres?
Aye.
Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Cudahy?
No.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I would like to, um, let you guys know that I came in late, and I have to leave. And another thing is that I may not be here for June's first meeting. My mom's gonna get operated, I just found out today. So, I don't know the date, but I'm just letting you guys know. I'll let our city manager know when that'll be, and if I'm not gonna be able to be here. We understand that, you know, you know, there was issues. I'm letting you guys know, and, and I need to leave, so excuse me, and thank you very much.
Moving on to Consent Agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda?
Second.
Ms. Navarres? Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Cudahy?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number nine, Public Hearing of Ordinance Number Four Twenty-three Amendment One to Increase Fiscal Year Two Thousand Seventeen, Two Thousand Eighteen Budget in the Amount of Ninety-four Thousand Five Hundred and Seventy-five Dollars.
Motion to approve for discussion? Second.
Public hearing.
I apologize.
Seven o'clock, public hearing is now open. Seven o'clock, public hearing is now closed. Item number ten, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number Four Twenty-three Amendment One to Increase Fiscal Year Two Thousand Seventeen, Two Thousand Eighteen Budget in the Amount of Ninety-four Thousand Five Hundred and Seventy-five Dollars.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, for the public hearing, for the second reading and adoption of ordinance four twenty-three.
Second.
Is there a presentation, or, I mean, at least a rationale to explain?
Or recap?
We don't have a presentation, the last meeting was, we had to move money around due to the settlements that we had paid the two hundred and eight thousand, and then we had to add money to the street maintenance for the paving, for clip-in. I think we added like forty-five thousand dollars, because we were out of the street maintenance.
No, I, I just saw that we have the rationale post, I mean, out.
Correct, it was, it was the settlements that really hit us hard, and one of them was two hundred and eight thousand, and we tried to move money around where we've had salary savings and-
Thank you.
Mr. Navarres?
Yes.
Ralph Cudahy?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number eleven, Introduction First Reading and Calling for a Public Hearing of an Ordinance for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro Master Plan and the Proposed Res zoning of Track Six Eight Block Seven Socorro Grant One Forty North Navarres Road from A One Agricultural to R Two Medium Density Residential to Allow the Construction of Apartments.
Make a motion to approve, oh, no, this is, introduction, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, what was the motion again?
No, no, but it's, it's, I would, it's a motion to, the staff is denying, recommending denial, for number eleven, so if you wanna reconsider your-
Number eleven.
It's not permanently, just until some issues are addressed.
Right.
It's to allow the public hearing or not?
These, these are the apartments that, on Navarres, that we had already approved the resolution. It went through planning and zoning, and now they're coming back with a recommendation.
And the recommendation was to deny pending-
It's on number eleven, yes.
With those four.
Mr. Bowing?
I don't wanna speak out of order, Mayor, but I can probably answer questions from, uh, council members that have concerns. One or two things, you either suspend the rules, or if the council is going, if the client simply deny it, then I would, I always recommend committing the owner to speak, if it's gonna be denied.
Okay.
We have a motion.
I'll do this, I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny for, for discussion, and then if it doesn't, if the vote doesn't pan out, it doesn't pan out.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Bobby Bowling with Tropicana Homes. This is the, as your city manager pointed out, this is one of the two developments that I came and spoke to you about a couple of months ago. Nothing has changed. You unanimously adopted a resolution of support. That resolution of support has already been sent to the state of Texas and graded. I have what I think is fantastic news. The scoring has already been posted, and I, I tried to send an email with an attachment showing that to each of your public email addresses. Both of the developments are in line for funding this year, for this region. I think it's fantastic projects, each one of them will bring about fifteen million dollars worth of construction to the city of Socorro. It's almost all grant funds from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. I think it's important to note, you know, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was at the hearing, it was, it was sparsely attended, there was barely a quorum, there were only three members there. I, I, I had a long discussion about some of the concerns. I'm not sure what's in your backup, but before that, that meeting, there were some questions with regard to access, specific for this, for this project. And I'd like to address those the same way I addressed the Planning and Zoning Commission. One of the concerns was that, and I'm not sure if you have the site plan or not, but this site fronts Navarres Road, and in, in the back, there is a, a lateral, I believe it's called the, and I can't see it here, but there's a lateral behind the, the parcel of land that, that, that we proposed. On the other side of that lateral is a residential subdivision. So, one of the concerns at the meeting was, why don't you cut a road through the back of your property and bring your people out a second point of access, or really a third point of access, through the residential subdivision? Well, there were two problems with that. Number one, it's nearly impossible, if you're any of you have dealt with the El Paso County Water Improvement District, to get their permission to cross one of their laterals. I mean, they, they don't have to do it, they're an agent of the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. They have a joint use agreement with the city of El Paso, and probably with you all, I assume, but they have no obligation to, to accommodate me at all, I'm just a private landowner. So, I, I don't have any ability to cross that lateral without some government intervention. Maybe you all have right of eminent domain, and you can force them to, but I, I don't have that power. It's the second reason why, just as a planner and a subdivision developer, and primarily a single-family residential home builder, those streets that are there in that subdivision behind my parcel are residential streets. I mean, they're very narrow, and they're intended only for those residents. It's not, the street was not designed to be like a collector arterial, or a shortcut for my apartment residents to go through their neighborhood and access Alameda, or, or whatever, that way. So, I mean, I, I actually think you all probably get, from hearing the discussion earlier tonight, that most of your residents are opposed to having more traffic come right in front of their house and drive through their neighborhood. So, I didn't really understand that request. I thought I was being a better steward and a better developer by keeping them off the residential streets and putting them onto Navarres, especially since this one's like fifty feet from the corner of Alameda. I mean, my, my residents are gonna come out on Navarres Road, they really don't have much reason to go up and get into Inglewood and then go north loop, they're gonna come on Alameda. So, this one was kind of a, a puzzle to me, the concerns. The second concern, the second concern that was expressed at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting was that the two entrances off of Navarres Road, one of the gentlemen visually thought that the two entrances that I'm providing, that I'm proposing are too close to each other. And again, I was a little perplexed by that, because almost every public- And again, I was a little perplexed by that because almost every public school in this county has like one entrance and it's sometimes divided by a median. This one is, is really about a hundred and fifty feet apart from each other. And so, there was some concern about an emergency situation, and I, I never really could understand what that emergency situation was. I mean, we're gonna be dealing with fire issues, with fire sprinklers and fire hydrants and everything self-contained within the subdivision. I couldn't, I couldn't really get an explanation as to what the concern was, that every single one of the hundred residents or so would need to get in their cars and get out of the two entrances at the same time. I, I've never experienced that in all of our years of development. So, I, I, I was a little confused by that, but I think it's important to point out some things that were not acknowledged by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you know, I've, I've driven this road, and before I, I put in my applications, I noticed, you know, Navara's Road isn't the greatest road, it needs to be improved. There's a section where it's kind of, you know, two-tiered. And I don't think that's great either. I, I mean, I don't like that either, but you obviously all don't have the money right now to improve that situation. I'm willing to take a risk and put my own money, and these, these are private development, this is at risk, this isn't a government-owned thing. I'll own this after the fact. But what I was trying to make the point to the Planning and Zoning Commission was, first of all, both of these parcels are agriculturally zoned, so you're not receiving any property taxes from them. As soon as the rezone takes place and the plating of these properties takes place, the Central Appraisal District will immediately call for a five-year rollback payment of taxes. So, you'll get an infusion of capital right away. And then with the development that we're gonna do, the property taxes, the sales taxes, and just the jobs and the houses themselves, I think are gonna provide you all with a lot of funding for, at some point, for you to address, you know, the substandard portions of Navara's Road. You'll have plenty of right-of-way to widen it, and so, so my case was like, well, if Navara's Road needs to be fixed at some point, why wouldn't you want my property tax dollars to put in the kitty, as well as the permit fees, to, to use those funds to someday improve Navara's Road? Otherwise, at some point, you're gonna have to improve Navara's Road anyways, and would you rather do it to accommodate some agriculturally exempt parcels there that you're not receiving tax dollars on? The Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman told me, and you can look back on the record, I don't know if those meetings are recorded, but he said, "Property taxes are not my issue, that, that belongs to city council. And you, Mr. Bowling, have a right to appeal to city council and make your appeal to them about property taxes there. But I don't care anything about that, and this body doesn't, doesn't listen to that." And it's, the, the, the final thing that I pointed out at the Planning and Zoning Commission was, and I mean, I don't wanna, you know, I mean, you all are the elected officials with, and I have a great deal amount of respect for you, but, you know, TDHCA, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, I mean, they have lots of grants and they have lots of opportunities, they're a great source for a city like Socorro. And it's kind of gonna make them scratch their head, and I think possibly jeopardize future grant requests and funding opportunities that you've sent them a unanimous resolution of support on this, but then you're, you're like changed your mind, and you said, "Well, you know, we're not gonna rezone it." Well, like, I can't develop it if it's zoned agricultural. So, those are the things I, I wish you all would consider, and again, the Planning and Zoning individuals that were there said, "That's not my concern, I'm not, I'm not elected official of the city of Socorro, those are for another, another day," and, you know, made it very clear, you know, Mr. Bowling, I think he even said, or it was intimated, "I think you're gonna be just fine at city council, but I have concerns with Navara's Road," and I think he really wanted to just send a message, I don't wanna speak for him, but it seemed to me like there was a message that he was concerned about Navara's Road, and he wanted to make sure you all were aware that he was concerned with Navara's Road. And I'm here to tell you, I'm concerned with Navara's Road too, and I think I'm here to help you pay for it, and I think I'm here to help provide a solution for that with my property taxes that I'm gonna pay. So, that, that was really the issue on, on this one. Same kind of set of circumstances on the second one, I know we're not there yet, but the other one got a recommendation, so, and they're both off Navara's Road, so I'm not, I'm not sure what the differentiation was. The, the main difference on this one, though, was his concern with the access that I couldn't provide through the residential subdivision behind the site. And I, and I just said, I, first of all, I don't have the authority to go over a lateral that's owned by the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation, El Paso County Water Utilities District. And second of all, I really don't even think that's good planning. I mean, I, I don't, I don't agree that that's good design. I think you would have, if I was proposing that, I think you would have fifty neighbors here going, "Why are you letting that developer bring his traffic through my neighborhood?" So, I'm not proposing that, so.
Mr. Nevada?
Any questions?
I wanted to add that on your backup, it says that the Planning and Zoning recommends denial, that's actually a typo, it's approval because it's meeting all of our ordinances. We can't implement, however, the commission, their concerns was the proposed rezoning is inconsistent with a master plan, building apartments might cause congestion on Nevadas, ingress and egress may not be adequate for security and safety and lack of infrastructure. Those were the commissioners' bullet points that they wanted council to know, is that that's the reason why they're denying. However, the Planning and Zoning staff, it's meeting all of our ordinances, we can't impose things we don't have in writing.
And can I say one more thing, Mayor? The city manager brought to my, reminded me one other thing, because I did read this back up, and I disagree with the finding that it does not comply with your comprehensive plan. As a matter of fact, if you pull the map out from your comprehensive plan, it very clearly delineates that both of these parcels on your comprehensive plan are planned for high-density residential use, which is exactly what I'm bringing to you. So, I, I, I don't know what, you know, I mean, I guess everybody's free to say what they want, but that's, that's just patently not true. I mean, you, you can look at your comprehensive plan, and it, and that's why the staff recommendation was that I am in conformance with the comprehensive plan, so.
Mr. Bennett?
So, then, there is, that's exactly what I wanna ask, what were the inconsistencies with the master plan? And then also, if, if before, well, we, this was brought to, to, to the commission, there was no other talk about this, about these issues prior to all this?
Correct, well, first we had the introduction and then the public hearing, and at the public hearing, I'm sorry, once they were, they denied it because these are the issues that were brought up. This is just a zoning change.
Right.
That's all they're coming here to is for a zoning change. However, these type of apartments are not required to bring in a plat when it's developed. So, you're, you're changing the zoning, allowing them to build. I know that they imposed, I think, ninety-six units, I don't know if it's on the first one or the second one.
This is the ninety-six unit one, yeah. This is, this is the one that's referred to as Navara's Palms on our application.
Yeah.
And...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a hundred and four units, I'm sorry.
Changing of the comprehensive plan, every time you go through a zoning change, that's the wording that is used, is because we are changing the master plan, because it's either zoned as agricultural and you're changing it, so we're, but that doesn't mean that that's not meant for commercial or, so that's the way it reads. We can bring up the map if you would like.
But, at this point, I'm sorry, just follow the question. So, then at this point, it is, we're just, we're just focusing on the...
Rezoning.
On the rezoning.
Correct.
And Jim, we, it is within our purview to either accept or deny the proposed rezoning, correct?
It is.
Mr. Lemon?
On your, your plans, do you have a de-acceleration lane on, on this apartment?
So, so we don't, but what we did do is the prior property owner actually dedicated for the right-of-way for Navara's to be widened. So, we, that has already taken place before we even needed to do that, so, like Navara's ends, is it twenty feet mark that they gave? Another twenty feet for Navara's to be widened? Yeah, so it's another twenty feet, which is wider than a typical deceleration, which is usually about twelve feet. So, you have more than just a deceleration, you actually have right-of-way to widen the street.
What is the timeframe for completion of this project?
So, yeah, let me, let me walk you through that, that's, so, the, the formal staff recommendation from the state to its board will happen in June. By state law, they have to do it the last week in June. So, even though it's scored, the formal recommendation isn't there yet. In July, the last Thursday of July, I believe it's the twenty-seventh, anyways, they'll vote and make the formal award of tax credits. Then, we basically have thirty months to complete the project. And these projects, usually with all the permitting and the financing that needs to be put in place, it takes us about a year before we can even start. So, we, we wouldn't be starting until July twenty nineteen or August twenty nineteen, and then we would finish about a year after that. So, we'd be on the ground, so, so you'd have more than two years to still consider this Navara's issue. We're, we're not gonna be ready to start for at least fourteen, sixteen months.
That was the point I was getting at, because they're talking about infrastructure. I think within two years, we should be able to take care of Navara's Road. It's not really that big, that long of a road, and I think if we can widen it within the next two years, I think that'll take care of one of those, actually two of the problems that they have.
Ms. Villalobos?
Mr. Bowling?
Yes, ma'am.
Please understand that we are trying, we are trying to change Socorro. We're trying to build better, look better, and, and we want our residents to be informed and also to incorporate with us their ideas. And, and this is why I believe the planning and zoning, because we have had these issues with our other development, and we do have residents that really actually get involved. I'm surprised nobody's involved in this one. But I did get a phone call, and one of the things they did tell me was that there's only one street coming into this, to this subdivision that we're talking about right now, not the second phase, or, I'm not sure which one is the first phase. And so, you're saying you're building a hundred and four in one phase and ninety-six in the other phase?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I understand that, you know, we're critical right now because you, you are getting the thumbs up from funding, and that, that is great. It's not that we don't want you here, we just wanna make sure that everything, all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and, and we're not doing an injustice. Our, our planning and zoning is, they're pretty smart, you know, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty smart, so, Mike, let me get back to my question. They were saying that the developer did not want to build a canal over, I mean, a bridge over the canal, and because they, you know, it's their bottom line that they would have to go in there and do it themselves, that's what they, they mentioned, and that, that there would only be one entrance.
Okay, so, your backup, well, the backup from the Planning and Zoning Committee anyways, had, that's not true, there are two entrances, they're both right off Navara's, and they're spaced further than a hundred and fifty feet apart. I'd be happy to, I, I don't know what the rules of order are, I could, I could show this here.
And while you're looking that up, Ms. Rodarte, could I also make a recommendation that along with these type of projects, we also get a map in the back?
It's an introduction, so you would've gotten it on the public hearing, presented this as, normally, we never discuss the introductions, but because you were all gonna deny, that's why he was allowed to bring that up, but in, in the, when you had the public hearing and you were gonna adopt, we would definitely have the...
But if I heard correctly, if we approve this today, that's, that's an approval for...
You're only approving the introduction, we still have to have a public hearing, notify the public for them to come to oppose or support.
So, by voting whether we do or don't today, that doesn't give them the right to build?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, just...
If you say no, then it won't come back. If you say yes, then it'll come back for the public hearing and then for the adoption.
Okay, thank you.
And, and let me add something to that, Ms. Villalobos. We're gonna go before your, your, your planning department and your permitting department. You have a codebook of subdivision requirements as well as building requirements, and there are hundreds of pages. What we put together is in conformance with what you have on your written plans. If you can see this site, these are the two entrances, one here and one here. Now, things are not to scale, so to speak, when you're looking at this on a tiny eight and a half by eleven, but this distance between these two are a hundred and fifty feet. So, you know, that's a, that's a good, you know, small city block, yes, it's, it's, so I, 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 I disagree with the finding that there was only one entrance. The individual who was making those comments, and with all due respect, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, he was saying that he considered this one entrance. And I said, "Well, you know, how so? It's, it's a hundred and fifty feet apart from each other, it's, it's two entrances." And he said, "Well, they just look like they're too close together." And that's where I got into the discussion that, you know, there are a lot of schools, almost every school, they wanna have a controlled entrance and exit, and I mean, what's more important than the safety of thousands of kids every day at a high school? So, most high schools are designed with one entrance, one in and one out. This is not the case, this is, you know, I know a hundred and four units sounds like a lot, but it's not much in comparison to three thousand high school students, which is the typical size of a high school in this county. So, I, I just, you know, like I said, I, I respect everybody for their own opinion, I disagree. I, I don't think some of the things that we're saying were altogether factual. For example, the, the disagreement with your comprehensive plan, that's just patently untrue. It is in conformance with your plan. And then the, the idea that there's one entrance. See, the idea, if you follow this little hand, he wanted me to cut through here and go over this lateral and then access, I believe this is the side, where there's a residential neighborhood over here. And it's not that I don't want to, it's that I can't. I mean, if you all told me as a condition to development, I have to, I mean, this is a fifteen-million-dollar project, if I have to build a thirty-thousand-dollar outlet to go through one of the residential neighborhoods, I will do it. I don't think you really want that, but I will do that. I mean, there's money in this project for certain contingencies such as that, and I can do that. However, I need your help in a condemnation proceeding, an eminent domain, a joint use agreement, something with the El Paso County Water Improvement District, because they don't grant those crossings to private developers. It's not for the public use, in their opinion. It's for my use and my benefit to enrich myself with a parcel of land. Now, if you all decide that, you know, and I'm not sure what your local agreement is, I'm familiar with the one in the city of El Paso, they have a blanket license with El Paso County Water Improvement District, and they can pretty much cross it whenever they deem it's of the public necessity, and then they, they come up with funding, a variety of ways to do that. If you all wanna do that, I'm willing to sit down and explore that. But, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, you've got residents here earlier tonight, the main complaint that I heard was that some subdivider is gonna use streets that they use that they live on. I'm proposing not to do that. Like, I don't wanna go through their neighborhood, so...
Ms. Villalobos?
And again, I think we should maybe not close that and, and keep it open just in case. To understand our residents, because I live there, the reason we don't want, and I know the, the other residents coming in is because we are primarily two acres, one acre and a half, we have farm animals, and, and that's why we wanted to keep, it's very unique, our area's very, very unique, and we wanna keep it that way. And that's our reason, I don't know what their, their reasoning would be, but I would just keep it open just in case.
Sure.
You know, and I don't know what, you know, what we need to do to talk to the county about, you know, but we do have many streets here where we cross over, they have a bridge and we cross over. But I just want you to keep it open because you'd never know when they're gonna fight you on it.
I, I, you know, I, like I said, I offer that, you know, as a concession, if that need be, I, I can find money, I have a contingency for this project, and that would be something, if it was necessitated, I, I'd do it, so...
Thank you, I appreciate the...
Mr. Bennett?
I, for my own orientation, what side is Alameda Street, please?
Alameda is over here.
Okay.
Can you see the little hand? So, this is, I'm not sure what that section line is representing, but that's more or less where Alameda, where the corner is right there. It's right off the corner. This is an, this is a house, and then over here on this side of the street, there's some residential houses, yep.
I just wanted to show you this map here.
Oh, perfect.
It's a better picture of the site. This is Alameda and this is a proposed site.
Perfect. Yep. Yep, that makes it a lot more clear. There's a, some type of business here, right here on the corner.
The Crusado Restaurant.
There you go.
I've had, I've had, a few breakfasts there.
Yeah, so the entrances, one is here and one is here.
Mr. Lemon?
And I could click back to the other one that shows it, see, here it is. See, there were one here and one here. I think this blue line, more or less, if you can see that, that pretty much is Alameda right there.
I think we were misled by the, the misprint of denial. The planning and zoning department recommends approval. I can't see three people who bothered, who showed up to that meeting to kill a seven, how many million-dollar project?
They're fifteen million.
Fifteen million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Because of, um, I don't know if they were not, um...
Were not viewing this correctly.
Exactly, thank you. And I think we, you know, if Mr. Perez would change his motion to approve this, this is just for the zoning change? This is just for the zoning change? And that way, if there's a problem that anybody has later on, they can bring it up.
Can I make one more observation from that meeting? There were no residents there, just FYI. I mean, there were no citizenry, it was just us at the end of the meeting and the three-member commission.
Mr. Perez?
At this time, Madam Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and rescind my motion to deny, uh, the zoning change, and at this time, change that motion to approve the zoning change.
Second.
Mayor, just in the interest of full disclosure, I know some of you, I, I've known some of you for much longer than, than some others. So that you heard it from me first, I have worked with Mr. Bowling and some of his companies from time to time, I've known him for many years, but I don't like him, so...
Another lie.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twelve, introduction, first reading, then calling for a public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tracks eleven and eleven A, Block Six, Socorro Grant, from a one agricultural to R-two medium-density residential to allow the construction of ninety-six apartment units.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion and action...
Thank you all very much, Mayor. I, I, I know this is a little wonkish and a little nuanced, and it takes a while to explain, I appreciate your patience. It's not as black and white as it appears always, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, discussion and action to enter into an MOU with Isleta del Sur Pueblo Economic Development Office.
Motion to have the city enter into an MOU with Isleta del Sur Pueblo?
Second.
Mr. Reta?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, what you have before you is an MOU with a great program with the Tiguas. They are looking to have some of their, uh, youth be stationed or, um, have a field site to gain some work experience. They're wanting to pay them themselves, cover liability and workman's comp, they're just needing our agreement to actually give them a place to learn skills. So, this would be similar to an internship program, however, the, the Tiguas would be paying them themselves.
Ms. Delavos?
Mr., Mr. Victor, how many, how many are we planning to hire?
Right now, they have eight, and we wouldn't hire them. It, everything would go through the Tiguas, we're just the actual job site that would receive them.
Possibly eight.
Mm-hmm.
Possibly eight, okay. And we're giving them forty hours a week?
Uh, it would depend on their schedule, whatever it's available to, but everything, HR, any kind of hiring, mentorship, training, would go through them. We would just be the job site to say, "This is their duties that you would perform." We go with them with a guidance counselor to kinda walk them through the whole process, how you answer the phone, how you greet constituents, how you go ahead and carry out in basic office tasks, similar to what a clerk position would be for the city.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve.
There was a motion.
I'm second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number fourteen, discussion and action to authorize a mayor and chief of police to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Cano Tio Independent School District for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Mr. Perez?
Is this a reauthorization, or, or was something already in place?
No, I think it's, uh, first time, mm-hmm.
We don't have a presentation?
No, Linda, do you have any presentation for this item? No, and unfortunately, our acting chief has been deployed to the National Guard.
Is, is this very time-sensitive, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, is this very time-sensitive?
No.
Then, uh, I, if it's okay, I'd like to table this, and I'd like to hear, because this is, like, way over there. And although it, having those connections are good, but I just wanna...
Get a little more info.
Yeah.
Before...
So, if I, like to go ahead and rescind my motion and table this item until we can have a presentation on it?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action on approval request to waive the event per me fee for the annual bizarre at La Purisima Church for September twenty-eighth through thirty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Delavos?
I have a question regarding, um, not actually waiving, and I don't know if I can ask the question, but do we ha- do we make them sign something where we're not responsible for any accidents? Or not? The has, no?
No, I mean, it's their event, so they're, they're liable.
But we don't have, oh, something that...
No, ma'am.
I, I think Jim mentioned that there's a, a whole harmless clause somewhere.
Well, we're immune from any, uh-huh, we're immune from any liability, but there's nothing that they sign.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number eighteen, discussion and action to approve Resolution five forty, authorizing the City of Socorro to submit a grant application to the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, requesting twelve thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-six cents in grant funding to offset the cost of securing tactical vests for Socorro police officers. There is no match requirement for this grant.
Motion to approve. Second.
Firehouse Subs, mm-mm. Oh, no, that's...
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor and Council. This before you is a request from our police department to, um, secure twenty-six tactical vests. Right now, they have ballistic vests and they have traffic vests, but this would offer, uh, a higher level of ballistic protection. Um, and they will be hard armored plates. The amount is twenty-six thou- about twenty-six thousand dollars, and there is no match.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Item number nineteen, discussion and action to approve Resolution five forty-one, authorizing the City of Socorro to submit a grant application to the US Soccer Foundation Safe Places to Play Grant, requesting thirty-four thousand in grant funding to offset the cost of establishing a soccer field at Mauro Rosas Park, three hundred fifty floor morada, Socorro, Texas, seven nine nine two seven. There is a fifty percent match requirement for this grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have the match?
So, um, this is through the US Soccer Foundation. Um, what they do is they provide to several, um, several, uh, donors donate items for a soccer field. Um, we have to go through their vendors, one of them is Musco Lighting for the lighting, and the other one is Hunter Industries for their irrigation system. Um, they would provide that. So, we looked at parks that did not have adequate irrigation or adequate lighting. Um, Mauro Rosas is one of those parks. Um, there is a fifty percent match, but we can use in-kind work from our Public Works Department to fulfill that grant, um, request. Also, just to note that the thirty-four thousand dollar amount might change, so I, we might have to come before you again, based on the actual quotes that we get. Um, so that is expected to be a lower request, funding request amount.
And second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to extend existing metal guard rail from corner to corner near the end of eleven four sixty Van Nice Drive. Ms. Delavos?
Counsel, so, um...
Motion to approve.
To approve, second. Thank you, guys. Um, so, we already have a guard rail there, it's just short, and, uh, Mr. Price has been paying the price by fixing his fence every time they hit it, because, um, although it has a guard rail, there's still a, a space that, that other vehicles go through it and then try to turn and end up taking his fence. So, and they, of course, they don't stop, so he's asking if we could complete those two, that section? Is that something that we, we, we're not having to remove the whole thing, just add to the sides?
I mean, I'm pretty sure we can do that. The price for a guard rail, just to place there, it's five hundred and seventy-five dollars. But, I mean, we can place a guard rail. I don't know if we're, we'll be able to work with what they have here.
That's what I'm saying, can we work with what we already have, so it, it, the cost is less?
Yes.
Two small ones on each side?
You mean, like, two other poles, short ones?
I, I, whatever's less expensive, just where vehicles are not, you know, going right through the area.
Yes, we can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Perez?
It, I don't know, it may be more advantageous to just consider reflecting the entire thing, because then, at le- at least you're only having to dig on two sides. Versus, if you have two small ones, it's right and left, and then right, so you're doing, uh, you're doing things twice versus just having to...
Whatever's less expensive.
I, that's just me.
Yeah.
If, maybe that may be more cost-efficient.
Mr. Perez?
Do we have a policy of how they're built?
What do you mean?
Yeah, do we have a policy of how big they're supposed to be?
Well, no, because every, every crossing is a different size.
Okay, so there's no, there's no set policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Because some are a lot smaller, like for dead ends, or, it, it just depends on the size of the entrance.
What I'm saying is, if, if there's a forty-foot street, do we have a policy as to how much, how much we're gonna block?
No, it just depends on the feet of rail, and then the cost of it, the paint, the labor.
Mr. Perez?
Was this, uh, placed when the city was already reincorporated, that you know of?
Not that I know of it, and it doesn't look like something that we, but I don't know, it, it's not a good picture, so I would have to go out there and say.
So, that's what I'm asking, is that maybe, it, it, maybe one, an old, um, guard rail that was placed in there maybe by the, you know, the owner or somebody, and...
Mr., Mr. Price did mention that the city did place it?
Oh, he did?
He, uh, he, they placed it, um, he just said, you know, it was a while back. He is at the, currently, uh, suffering from cancer, and so I could barely understand what he was saying, but he had come to, uh, planning and zoning, and they asked him to come.
And we would have to verify that it is in city's property, if not, we would have to bring it back. We can't go into private property. So, we would have to verify that with the planning and zoning department. But she's gone.
Can we postpone to have staff look into it first, and then come back with more numbers and more answers?
I, it's such a small item.
I know, I was gonna say, just take care of it.
Yeah.
For the sake of, sake.
Yeah.
Motion to approve. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Seven forty-three, we are now in executive session.